Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we can all rise for Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Here.
Carmody?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Regan?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Tata?
Here.
Tessa?
Here.
Maron?
Here.
All right, and on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept or approve Consent Agenda Items 3A through 3M.
Motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. I don't know if there's anyone here from the Building Maintenance Committee to get sworn in? Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Larry, please step forward and get sworn in. Thanks, Tom. And Mr. Zabrowski is being reappointed to the Public Utilities Commission. Thank you. And thank you very much for your service to our town, Mrs. Zabrowski. All right, public question and answers, anyone in the public have a question for the council? Sir? It is.
Please, just your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Geraldine Kakese, I live on South Little C Avenue.
My name is John Golds, John A. Golds, I live on South Little C Avenue.
Thank you.
Geraldine's going to recite something that we wrote, I will have a few things after she recites there.
Okay.
We're actually here tonight to just to address the situation in South Little C Avenue Block that houses the Islamic Center. Last week we saw a new sign go up, placed on our block of South Little C, it states that from 311 to 411, 24, parking is allowed on both sides of the street. It's a two-way street right there, that's a problem, two cars do not fit. Currently, there's no parking on the odd side, but they're allowing it for this month. Friday afternoons and Sundays, they do allow parking, Friday is their time of worship, we understand that. But now, with the new sign, between the hours of 7:00 and 11:00 PM, every single night of the week for a month, people are parked on both sides of the street. Now, we have many rentals on our street, and most of those rentals have off-street parking, which means that not everybody is fortunate enough to work 9 to 5, and when they come home, there is no place for them. And the parking is just, if you were to drive by there any night of the week for the next month, started Sunday night, you'd have trouble getting down the street. Now, the first and foremost problem is for the residents, obviously, residents meaning the owners of the houses and tenants who pay rent to live there, and now, everything's kind of turned upside down. What we're disappointed about, we're in our early 70s, we've lived there for over 30 years, and, and we've never actually been included in anything, any changes that were going on there. This is disappointing, that a meeting is never called, or, you know, if people choose not to go, that's fine, some people are too busy to go, many of the people on my street we left, they haven't come home from work yet, and people are already starting to park for the Islamic Center. So, the thing is, we feel we've never been included in any conversation that has impacted us in any way as a neighborhood, and this creates a hardship for all of us, and it impacts our quality of life. It's, it's just that simple. We have nothing against the Islamic Center, that's not it, it's just that from the time they moved in, in 2000, January 2019, they've never had a parking spot, it was a little church, some of you probably know it, some of you may not, but it's been a little church that's been there probably over 100 years, and there's no parking lot with it. So, there's not even like, one or five spaces there, anybody that goes there, including the people who maintain it, keep up with it, they have no place to park, they have to park on the street. So, this, this is, you know, we understand the Friday worship time, and that seems to go pretty well. It's between 12 and 3:00 in the afternoon, they come, they park, we haven't really had any serious issues with parking, there is a gentleman that kind of oversees it, and he's more than willing, you know, if there's a problem, he comes out and addresses it, he's very nice. But, the, the parking is at a premium on the street, it always has been, because several houses are rental properties, two and three family houses, two cars maybe per apartment, and a lot of them don't have use of a driveway, because the owners use the driveways. So, now we have this sign up, which, I have one issue with that, too, I want that, I'd really like that sign taken dow, down on April 12th. I want to discourage this parking on two sides of the street, because if you come up or down the street, two cars do not fit, and when, there's no place to even pull over. I mean, when we go home after this, we will probably have a problem, and we're fortunate to have a driveway, so, we just, you know, we feel that we're going to lose, even lose some good tenants on the street, because there is frustration for them. We've already heard it from the people that live next door to us, that, that rent, and it's like, where do you put your car, where do you go, there's a school and a church across the street, really, that's their private parking, and they don't really want other people in there, and that's understandable, too, they have that right. So, actually, what, the point is, we just feel really disappointed that we are never included in any kind of conversation that impacts us and our daily lives and our quality of life. And the center has grown tremendously since they've moved in five years ago, and as I said, they never had a parking spot. It's just a pla, at one time, they had tried to move in over off of 68, and it was turned down, I don't know if it was turned down in the town, I don't really know about that, but it was, they were turned down. So, then this came along, and all of a sudden, we heard, they were inviting us to like, see what was, it was all about, we didn't even know what was going in there, we had never been told, anybody bought it, and we live relatively close to it, so it does affect us, but it affects the entire street, and it affects the block to the, I guess, the right of us, because those people are scrambling at night, too, I've seen a couple of them park in the schoolyard, and then they go out, probably 11 o'clock at night, and move their cars back near their house, which is pretty considerate on their part. So, we re, we appreciate their right to worship, and we think this is a good thing, that's, that's not the problem, however, we do feel that we were left out and not allowed any voice. So, basically, that's what I wanted to say, and that I would like a sign removed the day after their worship period, Ramadan ends. Thank you for your time, and you wanted to say something.
Sir, in the mic if you don't mind?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
My thoughts are very simple. In 2019, if we, if the neighborhood had been involved in the conversation, maybe some of this would have been resolved, I don't know, it's just hearsay, but that's in the past. The, the past mayor brokered, put this deal together, someone else brokered the deal, all backroom deals, neighborhood never got involved in it. It's quality of life and safetiness on the street, that's what I'm arguing about. I don't feel, the quality is, is, I moved to this town in 98, and why? The quality of life. I liked the, the center of town, I liked the Kaplan's when they were still in, I liked the pharmacy, all those things disappeared, because the quality of life is disappearing also. I don't want it to disappear on my street, because I don't see any of the other streets disappear, so I'm very upset, and I was upset when I saw that sign, because I live on the neighborhood, and again, all of a sudden, signs go up, and we're not informed. So, it's safety and quality of life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments, I was unaware that that was an issue on South Little C, but if I could ask one of you to leave your name and email her name and phone number with the clerk, and I'll follow up with the police chief and see, you know, let you know when I find out.
I'm glad we came, because it is a big issue, it's been going on, and I think it deserves attention by the council. Like I said, the past mayor, we met the past mayor at the Islamic Center when we were invited to go see, and there was a few other people there that I don't recall their names, but someone else brokered the deal and put this together, it's fine for a small church, but not for the size they're, they're growing in.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? All right, moving along, old business, Mayor, do you have an update on technology?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, our consultant has one more day of interviews, they'll be completed Thursday, the interviews of the individual town departments to determine what we have and what we need, and then, we will look forward to the development of a plan. In addition, Jeff Ziplo of CLA will be participating with Counselor Regan and myself with respect to completing the process of hiring the Director of Information Technology, the successful applicants have been through the first round of oral exam or interview, and we have the five top candidates which we will, we will be interviewing near the end of the month, we're coordinating dates that work for all of us.
Thank you very much. Do you have an update on the train station RFP process?
Yes, so, a letter from Don Crouch, the Economic Development Specialist, the EDC is currently in the planning and research stage for the upcoming RFP for the historic railroad station. As they embark on the process, they're committed to ensuring that the RFP accurately reflects needs, goals, and discussion with the council. They're conducting thorough research to define the scope of the project and outline requirements, and they are in the process of laying a solid foundation for a successful RFP process, so they're, they're working on it, and Mr. Crouch encourages you to contact him directly if you have questions.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you to Mr. Crouch for the update. Number seven, discussion on Hidden Brook Lane, Counselor Fishbein, this is your item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, this was on our last agenda, under Old Business, and I did have some questions, and I guess procedurally, I guess the procedure we're going to follow is if you have questions, it goes on a subsequent agenda, so, I just, I guess to Janice, where are we with this?
Right now, the town engineer and I are going to review the language that was submitted for variant, for easements, that was drafted by the attorney for the developer, and engineering has confirmed that the engineer is still in progress in completing their as-built drawings, so, and that was heard directly from them. So, I have a meeting later this week, and we'll see where that puts us in terms of the easements that we need.
You have a meeting with them?
The town engineer, no, we're going to take what language we were given, and we're going to see what we're going to do with it.
So, when did, because last time this was on an agenda, which was at least two weeks ago, that was the report?
I know, I've had a lot of work on my plate, so...
And it was unclear to me, all we heard was, language has to be reviewed, and I was not able to answer, ask questions, am I to understand that a lawyer, the one, I guess, that we discussed previously?
Mm-hmm.
Has now drafted potential language that we are reviewing?
Correct.
So, I don't know if that's the way, since we're receiving the easements, and we require the easements for these properties to be developed, why aren't we just drafting the easements and saying, and sign off on them?
Well, we haven't had a need to do it in the past, I mean, we don't, I think, you know, on the utility side, like electric and water sewer, we have pretty much like a standard process and a standard language that we want to see, but in terms of these other easements, and they're, they're not as standard or as, I think, consistent as they would be for those utilities, but, you know, if we had to, we'd come up with a form that we need, but, you know, it doesn't look like I'm going to approve the language that was provided, so, we'll probably end up doing exactly that, but, you know, it's their obligation to provide them to us, and so, you know.
Well...
On the utility side, we, they, we, there's actually a process with, like, the electric and water sewer, and their language has to match our language, and, you know, that's where, you know, they may get that language from us, but they still do all the work to put it together.
Yeah, I, you know, maybe it's a problem with the approval process, but I looked at those approvals, and I did not see language that said that they would be submitting for our approval, just that they would sign off on easements, right?
They have to give us those easements, so, you know, they, they should be doing the work, and we should be approving them, I'm not, you know, I don't work for them, I don't have to put those easements together, but we definitely want to make sure that we get what we wanted.
Yeah, I agree.
So, it's not been an issue in the past, in terms of, you know, actually providing the language, so, and they're reviewed, and if we don't like something, we tell them we don't like something.
So, since we're reviewing their language, what's the ETA on, on getting that done?
Well, I'll know later this week whether or not, how much we're going to change, the town engineer already has her comments ready, and that's what we're meeting to discuss. So, normally, even on the utility side, first, when we receive an easement, we make the department give us their technical review, and make sure that includes everything that they expect it to include, because they're the experts in terms of the subject matter, and then it comes to the law department, so, that's what we're doing, and then, it will be up to them to get them properly executed.
Yeah, no, I, I, I got that, that's, that was sort of my point with who drafts the easements, because we have the technical knowledge.
Well, except that, it's, it would, it's not like the, the site, what do I want to say, it's one of the easements, the sightline easement, it's not something that we normally have, it's, so it's not something like we have the standard form or standard process, the same thing for the, even for the, like, the snow easement, I mean, we, I went looking for them, like, when did we, I don't even recall when we last gotten one of those, so, that type of thing, so it's not something that we would have as standard as we would for the other utilities.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just asked that we leave this on Old Business, or just have it on for an agenda item again for the next meeting, so that we, so these people can get some closure?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions on Hidden Brook Lane? Moving on to number eight. So, I'll open a public hearing to consider an act on additional senior citizens' property tax. Would you like to step forward? All right, and just, your name and title for the record, please.
Kevin Coons, and I'm the assessor in Wallingford.
Rhonda Caswell, I'm a property appraiser for the town of Wallingford.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Coons, would you like, just like to explain the, the difference between what we're looking at now and the current program?
We have the state mandated, mandated program that we normally administer, and then, currently, we have two deferral programs, one is called a tax deferral, and another is called an additional tax deferral program, so there's certain criteria that someone needs to be eligible to, for that program. The taxes are deferred, ultimately, they would be paid at some point, they're down the line, so, now, these, both of these programs do have liens on them, and we get a lot of folks that come into our office that apply for the state program, and we tell them that they're, they may be eligible for these deferral programs, but when they hear the word lien, they kind of, they're hesitant to apply for these programs. We do have a lot of folks on them, but that kind of, they shy away from the liens.
Questions from the council? Mrs. Tatum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, in regard to the liens, so the, the programs that, well, I just want to make it clear, so the, the current program, nobody's going to be kicked out of their house for inability to pay taxes if they take advantage of these programs, correct?
Correct.
There will just be a lien that eventually, at the time of sale, those taxes will be paid back to the town.
Are you talking, you're talking about...
The current program.
The current program, that's correct.
Correct, okay. And, so, the programs that are being proposed tonight in this ordinance, those would be, so those are different, so how, how do those differ from the current deferment program?
This would be a, a tax credit program, and it, it very, it's very similar to the state program with based on income and a sliding scale and the assessment of the property, they get a tax credit, so that doesn't have to be repaid at another, at a point down the line, so...
Okay.
What we're proposing is using sort of the same guidelines as the state has currently, but we're raising the income limits to allow more folks that may not apply, may not be eligible for the state program, but if we raise the limits, they will be eligible for a local tax credit.
Okay, so, when you say that people come in and ask about it, and then, when they hear there's a lien, then they, they shy away from applying, I mean, to me, that's saying that they, they're not in severe need of that, because if you truly needed the program to not be left, kicked out of your house, you wouldn't, you wouldn't care if there were a lien or not, I mean, at some point, somebody has to pay the taxes.
Correct.
So, I'm, I know we've been talking about this for months and months, at this point, I'm comfortable with the program we have now, I think, you know, the point of it, in my opinion, is that we just make sure that, you know, someone who's elderly and can't afford their taxes isn't, isn't made to, to lose their home because of it, and the program we currently have now addresses that already, you know, at the point of sale, the taxes get paid back to the town. Now, I do have a question about interest, is that, the current deferral program, does that accrue interest during that time, or no?
I believe the additional tax deferral, they can defer up to 75% of their taxes, and there is, I believe, interest of 4%. One program, I think it's 4%.
The main, the main one, it's, it's not, not until it becomes, so, when the property is up for sale, or if the person is deceased, they have a certain number of months to pay off the sum before interest starts to accrue again...
Okay.
...on, on the deferment program.
Okay, and now, is that, that lien, is that behind, if there were a mortgage on the property, is that behind the mortgage?
It's not, it has the same priority that we have normally.
So, that would come before a mortgage?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's interesting, so if, if the mortgage is in place already, and then, somebody chooses to take advantage of the deferral program, that, that goes ahead of the mortgage, just like a tax...
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, like I said, I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable with the program we have now, I think it just, it prevents somebody from, from having to leave their house, and eventually, the town does get the taxes back. I'm, I'm always lenient of carving out a tax break for a specific group, and if we go with a new program, that's what it is, so basically, you know, somebody's paying for a, a tax credit if, if somebody's, if somebody's getting a break. So, I think the program we have now is sufficient, you know, it defers it, it prevents somebody from having to leave their home for the inability to pay, but the town eventually gets, gets its money back, so, as of now, I'm, I'm comfortable with what we have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just had some additional questions first, the existing program, are we at, understanding we have deferral, which we currently have, which puts off payment, and we have credit, which is no payment, essentially, right, that's the, the dynamic, under the deferral program that we presently have, are we at the max of what we can do?
I don't believe so, I mean, I think there's a lot more folks that would be eligible for this, but they choose not to apply for it.
Well, that's a different issue.
That, that, probably, okay.
But, I mean, that's, that's a little different, what I'm saying is, if there's this, let's just say there's a particular set of people, let's say that the age is up to, anybody 65 or over is our current deferral program, let's just say, and my example is, the state allows us to lower that to 60 and over, you know, we are not at the max of what the state would permit, because basically, we are a creature of the state, and we can only do what the state tells us to do. So, I'm trying to see, can we tweak the deferral program to give more incentive for individuals that would like a deferral as opposed to a credit?
The, the main group of people who, who can't get into the deferral are people who can't afford to pay their taxes and are currently delinquent, because the deferral program does not allow you to get in if you're delinquent. That is, that is probably the biggest barrier that, you know, when, when I'm dealing with the possibility of a foreclosure, you know, I am looking at some people who said, well, gee, if they, if they were current, then they could have gotten into the deferral program, so that's one aspect of the program that prevents people who, who would benefit from that from getting in.
And is that a creature of our making, or is that something, does the state say that you can only be eligible?
It is in our ordinance, I would have to double check, I don't know that that would be a bar, I, I'd kind of have to think that through, but that is in our ordinance.
So, I mean, just...
That's something that could be looked at, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, just think, if, if we have people that are, that would be eligible, right, if they aren't in our rears presently, you know, maybe we could work out something in the ordinance, you know, saying, okay, we're going to freeze whatever they owe presently, you know, not have the interest, which is one of the benefits of deferral, right, for that period of time, and then... For that period of time and then allow those people to get into that program. You know, that, that might make some sense.
Yeah, I would have, I really have to look at, I mean, I haven't done a deep dive in that. But that, I do notice from my foreclosure work that that, that's a problem for some people who, I mean, I don't ask them if they would qualify, but I'm assuming that in my dealings with them, that they probably would have qualified had they not gotten too far deep in terms of being delinquent.
Yeah, sure, and if we can do it, I, you know, I think that would be one, one thing we could do here. This program though, this credit program, it's not available, the way I read it, to everybody 70 and over. You have to be a, have, be receiving permanent total disability benefits, correct?
It's either 70 years of age or older or totally and permanently disabled.
Okay, I see the or there, let's see.
Those were added because other programs that we have, those are, those categories of people are also included in not just the age. It's if you're permanently disabled. So it's consistent with what you already offer.
So, and we talk about this in Hartford a lot, there's no asset test here, right? It's based upon age would trigger it, possibly income would trigger it, but you could have a million dollars in the bank.
Correct, based on my research with other towns, there are other towns have considered assets, but we have not considered that in our analysis.
Okay, I mean, I think that's a, a big issue, at least for me here. Because we're saying to someone, if you're 70 or over, no matter what assets you have, you aren't paying property taxes, right? Because it's a credit.
Yeah, I mean, when the committee did the work, I think that, you know, one of the issues when you get into assets, it's just, I think in terms of how they analyze people's applications and whatnot, it's really, we're just going to end up getting bogged down in analyzing people's financial situations, maybe a bit more than we're really qualified to do. But I mean, it is income, if they're getting, you know, if they're getting funds through, that's considered income, it would qualify, it would have to fit into here. So, but you're right, it doesn't, it doesn't include their assets, that's correct.
Yeah.
As written, yeah.
You know, I, I think four years ago, I had somebody come to me and they're on the rental assistance program, which is a state program, they pay the rent and she owned four houses. So you're paying her rent, you know, and does that make any sense? I mean, so, well, I thank you for the discussion. I mean, I sort of align myself with the comments of Council Tada. I think we do have good programs for the deferrals presently. I'd like to look at what I was sort of suggesting though about getting people into this program. If the only bar is them being up to date, you know? The pandemic hit a lot of people really badly and, you know, I can't tell you how many people I talked to who are trying to catch up on property taxes. So I'd certainly be open to that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I read in some of the prior materials that was used to sort of develop this from last year, that some other programs were sort of compared and looked at. But that there was no real estimate of the number of people that this could potentially, I would say assist or help. Do you have, I mean, I know because it's difficult to determine that level of granularity at the household level as to how many people this would be. But I mean, to the points of everybody up here, I mean, like you're looking at a very modest tax credit based on your income. You have to basically make no money in order to get the full benefit. And if you look at the way that the town is going to give you an additional benefit, you got to live here at least 20 years, right? So you're talking about 20 years to get an additional $400 off your tax bill if you make less than $22,000 a year. So in the grand scheme of things, I don't know how many people that is, but I would suggest that to those people, $400 would be actually super helpful. And in addition to that, it would probably fall back into our local economy. So I just want to kind of point that out. And the second piece of this, I mean, the cap, the maximum that you can make income wise, where you're no longer even eligible for it, is still pretty modest considering. It's lower than the median household income in Wallingford. So I don't know how many people this will actually have impact. And that was sort of my question, do you have an estimate or do you know in other towns, maybe similar to ours, like the number of people that would take advantage of something like this?
I think in one of my memos, I think in June 7th, I sort of estimated.
Was it around 4,000?
Uh, 4,200 households.
Okay. And then again, you're scaling it back too. Like if you don't live, if you've only lived here five years, you only get, what, a quarter of it of the additional?
Yes.
Past what the state will give you.
And that, that number was like the worst case scenario because obviously we, we really have limited information about how old people are, you know, that's, that's the, that's what we don't have.
Right.
You know, in terms of firms, so that's, you know, based upon what work he could do on that, that was the number used as a worst case scenario.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I mean, you know, if you've lived here five to 10 years, you get 50%. So you're, and again, the maximum you could get would be $400 if you're destitute. So, you know, I don't necessarily have a problem with this. I think it's a pretty good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So this was developed by the council in a prior term. A group of elderly residents had come before the council and asked for a review of the tax deferral program and looking for tax credits. So the mayor Dickinson had appointed a committee that, you know, worked with our assessor and looked at the impacts of, I think it was three different programs. And after looking at the impact on tax collection in town of the three different programs, I think they chose this one to recommend to the council as kind of a middle of the road solution. It wasn't the most aggressive, it wasn't the least impact. But there, the committee did study, did look at the potential impact to tax revenue in town. They had some guestimates, and better than guestimates, some, some estimates as to what the potential tax income would be. So that, that's the process that got to this deferral, I mean, this credit program being proposed to the council. And my recollection of the last ordinance committee that we attended and discussed this, I think a lot of those residents who came forward seeking this program thought that it wasn't aggressive enough, which was interesting. But I just wanted to share my recollection of the process with the council.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess the, the question that I have out there is from the committee's recommendation, there was a requirement for the residents to live here at least 183, or be a full-time resident, 183 days a year, although that did not translate over to the proposed addition. Was there a?
Not in the ordinance?
No.
Proposed, okay.
I think we missed that one. We were supposed to put that in there. Hold on. You're right, it is supposed to be in there.
Thank you. Janice, do we have the ability to, we cannot amend an ordinance at this stage, correct?
You can, you can't like change it entirely. You can't like turn it into something else. But you can, you can make some amendments to it.
Are you proposing that as an amendment, Council Regan?
Sure, I guess I would.
I'll second it.
Like to make a motion that we add the applicant's residency requirement, be a property owner for at least five years and live at the residence for at least 183 days of each year to the proposed ordinance titled Additional Senior Citizen Real Property Tax Credit.
Sir, and I think it was seconded by Laffin? Oh, okay, uh, seconded by Fishbein then.
I would, but other people were jumping at the bit, so I'll defer to them. They seemed very excited.
Thank you for your restraint, sir. Discussion on the motion to amend it, to add the residency requirement? Let's take a voice vote on that, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, before we get there, does anyone from the public want to comment on the, the idea of adding a residency requirement? Okay, well, we'll take a voice vote then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, okay, amended. Do you have any other comments, Council Regan?
Uh, no, I'm all set, thank you.
All right, Mr. Testan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a point of order, are we in a public hearing?
We are.
I was, I'm trying to remember the process. Should we be closing the public hearing before we'd be making motions? We'd be making motions or is that appropriate?
So, so Janice and I had a discussion about this today and my question was exactly the proper way to handle the public hearing. And I guess the consensus was that in the, with the bonding issues, the attorney likes to have it in a particular format in order to facilitate what he does. But I guess for this purpose, there's not necessarily a prescriptive way to handle the motions and such. So we, sometimes we have the public speak at the beginning. I figure this might be helpful to have the assessor give his testimony first and then go to the public.
Oh, that's fine, I'm just trying to follow the right policy procedures.
Good question.
I think just a clarification might be helpful, certainly for the public. I heard a comment made at one point that someone would be paying no taxes. Now I'm reading, and then as I read this, I don't see anything that indicates a homeowner would have all of their taxes deferred. Is that correct?
With the tax, the regular tax deferral, they can defer, is it?
No, there's no program where you don't pay the taxes. This gives a small credit.
Right, I'm saying, we're talking about this. I know there are tax deferral programs.
Deferral just delays the payment.
That I understand 100%.
That would be the entire payment.
Understood, so, and the recommend, and this has been recommended to us by the committee that was appointed to study.
Correct.
The possibility of adding additional tax relief programs for senior citizens. And the disabled. So they recommended this, which is a tax credit program, which, am I correct in my understanding that this could be taken advantage of on top of, in addition to the tax deferral programs? Or would it have to be done in place of? Okay.
They could, they could apply for both programs as well as the state program.
Right, and the program that is before us tonight, that we're discussing, the tax credit program, as Mr. Reynolds pointed out, the actual amount of the reduction in taxes would be a maximum of $400? And that's for someone making basically nothing.
Correct, yeah.
So somebody earning the top of the eligible income level of $64,000 would receive an additional benefit of $100.
Correct.
So if we were to approve this, it would provide, it would allow a family, a couple, a single, whatever, making $60,000 a year in income, it would reduce their tax bill by $100.
Based on the local program, yes.
That's what this program is. Okay, so when we say that the current programs are probably sufficient enough and there's no need to go with this, we're basically saying, well, we don't see the, and that's fine. But I just had heard the comment made that someone would be paying no taxes. And if I was in the public, I'd be looking at this, I'd be hearing this discussion and think that that's what we're voting on. A program that eliminates the tax bill for people. So even people making literally below poverty level, this would potentially allow them to reduce their tax bill by 200, 300, no more than $400.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification and I believe that it's probably helpful that, that clarification be made. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Laffin.
I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Fishbein.
If their tax liability is only $400, they would get the $400 credit.
I believe that we ran across something where.
I'm, I'm looking at, I don't, I don't know. I'm looking at 20 years or more, you get 100% tax credit, right? So, and the max, no?
100% of the benefit.
Yeah, so I'm, then I'm going to the next chart, so that's where you would go. So you, 100% of 400 is, is 400, that's how you're getting the max, right? So if the tax liability is 400 through other program, I don't know. I mean, we, we don't have any properties in, in the town of Wallingford that, none?
Where somebody's living?
I don't know, I, we don't have any. If we don't, we don't, I, I don't know, but that's what I'm looking at.
But I guess according to the state program, there's a minimum that, or they have to pay 50% of the assessed value, their taxes cannot, 50% of the tax bill.
Okay, so that, so that because of the, because of the state's requirement of the 50%, you wouldn't get there.
I'm sorry, if you could speak into the microphone.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Um, in order for them to receive the maximum on the state, the tax bill itself would have to be 2,500. So if they received the maximum on the state and then the maximum on ours, they'd still have a tax bill of $850.
Okay, that's, that's fair.
I don't know of too many properties in town that have a tax bill less than 2,500 either.
Okay, I, I don't know, you guys know, I, I don't know. That's why we're here asking questions. How would one use both programs, both the deferral program and the credit program? How is that possible?
If I'm mistaken, I would believe we would apply the credit first and then that would be their net taxes and then they could defer the net balance of their taxes through the deferral program.
Okay, but the, so it's a, it's a recalculation at the back end because they're not paying taxes because they're deferred, right? So if they're 70, 71 years old, life expectancy is at least another 10 years. You've got potentially 10 years of deferral. During that non-payment of taxes, because they are deferred, we have the possibility of employing this credit. And I'm just trying to figure out, I guess at the back end, when the taxes actually get paid, you have to recalculate?
No, it'll come off the bill, it'll be on the bill.
Correct, it would be off the bill and they would have to come in every other year.
They're still told how much that, how much the bill is. So if it's, you know, if the bill is $3,000 and you're getting a $100 credit, they're going to take the 100 off of it and the rest, the remainder would be deferred.
Okay, so the deferral happens.
Each year.
Each year.
Yeah.
And then at the end, okay, that's, that's the answer. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had questions about that too, about the two different programs. So if we're offering, so if, if this program tonight, the credit program were going to effect, we're, this is not replacing the deferral, this is an addition to.
An addition to, yes.
Okay, so, so basically with the deferral, if somebody were to apply to both programs, the deferral, the town eventually gets its, its tax money back. But if we're crediting that and then deferring, then the town's losing out on that credited amount because we'll never get that back.
Correct.
Okay. And, and I believe before when I said somebody wasn't paying taxes, I meant if they use a deferral program, that person is not paying taxes as long as they're using that deferral program, correct?
Eventually they would.
Eventually, when, when the house is sold or the.
They owe the taxes.
They owe, right, so.
It's, they're all, they always owe them.
They're always owed.
But they're not required to pay them until such time or they have a disqualification in the program or something.
So the estate will end up paying or the, or whoever, okay, understood. All right, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the council, any members of the public have questions? All right, back to the council. We actually don't have a motion on this. Okay, good call. All right, so we'll close the public hearing on this item. Coming back to the council for questions or motion. I'll make a motion that we approve this senior real property tax credit. As amended, thank you, sir. All right, any discussion on the motion? Madam?
No, I, I do appreciate the amendment. No, I, I do appreciate the amendment in the mix and, and you guys being here answering the questions because it did solidify some of the stuff for me. So I, I think I'm comfortable. I think the amount of people, you know, it's a small amount basically at the end of the day. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I do appreciate your time being here. I also want to thank Mr. Chappell for his work on the committee, looking at this, at this tax issue. He's not here tonight, but wherever he is in TV land. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
No.
Armandy?
Yes.
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes. And the motion passes. All right. Before we go into executive session, Mr. Michael, were you here to get sworn in? If you'd like to come forward and get sworn in.
Enthusiastically.
Enthusiastically. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Michael, for your service. Item number nine.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut general statutes 1-225-F and 1-206-B to discuss pending litigation in the matter of Patterson versus Town of Wallingford. Second?
Second. Our motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We are now, we're going into executive session.
All right, I'll call this meeting back to order. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I move for a bid waiver to hire experts for Patterson versus Town of Wallingford as discussed in executive session.
Second. Motion is being seconded. Discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, we have a voice vote. Can we have a roll call vote, please, on number 10?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa? Moreau?
Yes. Our motion carries. Number 11.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a transfer of funds in the amount of $35,000 from salaries and wages and office expenses and supplies to professional services for lawyers. Second?
Our motion is being seconded. Discussion on the motion. All right. Any members of the public, discussion? We'll take a voice vote on number 11. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Noes, abstentions, motion carries. Moving on to number 12. So we have a one-member opening on the Building Committee. Last time we took applications and interviews, I just wanted to get the flavor of the council to see if folks are interested in doing the same or if we'd rather go to a traditional process where we just recommend someone and nominate a second and vote on them. Mr. Fishbein?
I know we have one person who has expressed interest, although we didn't advertise. I would have no problem putting that person on the committee. If the committee thinks they need more, so be it. But let's just move forward.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this? Mr. Laffin?
Yeah, the committee was originally intended to be five, and we appointed seven because seven people showed up and we liked them all. I don't think they're making any big controversial votes. They're more of an operating or functioning operational committee. I'm okay leaving it at the six. I don't think we need to supplant or add anybody else. I think they've got six. They work well together. They're all good people. Just let it lie.
Ms. Allenson?
I agree with Counselor Laffin. I think initially, I think this was initially intended for five and essentially we're at six. I think these people are very experienced. They have the relationships and I'm comfortable leaving it where it is.
All right, Mr. Testa? I'm sorry, did I see your hand? Mr. Reynolds?
I also don't have a problem with not replacing the individual if that's what the committee wants. The only thing that I would possibly suggest, and I also don't have a problem with somebody nominating someone else either, is asking the committee if they're lacking anybody, you know, experience-wise, background-wise, anything like that, and taking that into consideration, you know, if they're... I mean, I, you know, those are my only comments, but other than that, I mean, if the committee's fine with staying with six members, if we need to replace one member, I would defer to them to see what they need, I guess, whether they want a replacement.
Anyone else? Members of the public? Mr. Michael?
Jason Michael, Meadow Street. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but we'd love it if we got nine. It's work. Takes time. It's a challenge to, you know, round up people to, hey, let's go look at this beat-up building at 9 o'clock Saturday morning. You know, we found more times than not, we were short people or couldn't get together or there wasn't enough, and we certainly weren't for going out solo. We always wanted, you know, a couple people around just so everybody can bounce things off of each other. So I do happen to know the same person who's put their name forward because they reached out and I pointed them in your direction, and seems to be a pretty passionate fellow who would fit in. So if you're not going to give us nine or 11, back to seven would be great. The one we lost also was our secretary, and I don't know if there's anybody who's really enthusiastic about taking that place, but if it's a new guy, we can pin it on him, I guess. But, yeah, I mean, if it has any weight to be back to a seven, it would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other discussion? Allenson?
Well, I can appreciate the want for more people. I mean, everybody, if any department in the town is asked, could I use more people, I'm sure that they would say yes because everything is work. This is largely an advisory committee, and if it takes time to do the work, I really don't have a problem with them doing that. We haven't assigned them any kind of a timeframe on when they need to complete this work. And it does not escape me that our buildings are being referred to as beat-up buildings. So if we're walking into it with that kind of a predisposition, I would say that I'd rather, you know, I'm not going to take advice from a person who's walking in and telling me that all of our stuff is messed up. So I can appreciate it. And, you know, everybody wants more people to do more things, right? But this is advisory. It is not a commission. It isn't... I get it, but we have, there is no timeline for this completion. So work within, I would say, work within the parameters of the people that you have.
You know, the only thing I would say, talk about the buildings being beat up. I think if you come to Town Hall frequently, you see a lot of things that are maybe, you know, gives you some pause, like the stuff flaking off the walls and the ceiling in here is kind of an issue. So I don't think it's a huge leap of faith to say that, you know, some of our buildings need help. My kids' schools, for example, you know, the Town Hall, so on and so forth. So my two cents. Anyone else on this topic?
Like a motion?
Please.
How many? There's currently six members, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Building Maintenance Subcommittee remains at six members.
Second. All right, any discussion on the motion?
Excuse me, can I amend that? Remains at the current six members.
Right, okay.
Do you want to second the amendment? Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Carmody?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add my two cents. We heard from the chairman, they could use the extra hands. I think if we can find another qualified individual that's willing to serve on this committee, and I'm sure we can, that we should have the opportunity to interview those individuals and make another appointment to fill this vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
I just want to echo Counselor Carmody's statement and also say that these are people who volunteer their time. It doesn't cost us anything. So if they ask for another person or two or three, then I have no problem with it.
Mr. Fishbein?
I don't see the harm in, you know, seeking applications. We sort of, you know, I know it was on consent, but I don't know why we're hamstringing this group to only be through the end of... Well, it's through the end of the term, 2026, right?
No, it's the end of this year.
This year, 2025. So, you know, I would have been in favor of keeping them throughout the entirety of the term. But, you know, certainly if the individual who's run these meetings is asking us for more, I think, you know, we created them. I don't really think it's appropriate if, you know, it's an ad hoc committee, basically, you know. They think they need more hands. I don't see a harm. And by action of consent calendar, we term-limited them. It's the middle of our term tonight. So I would certainly be open to applications. I think I'm opposed to the motion because it just caps them at six with no opportunity to add more. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Allenson?
I will, you know, make sure to note that next time I say, hey, let's have all seven of you come up here because, you know, we thought you're all qualified candidates. We interviewed all of them. We thought they were great. We only wanted five, but in order to not pick and choose through our residents, we said, hey, let's have all seven. And now at the very first opportunity that we have to go back to the original, the original ask, which was five, we're saying, nah, let's do seven. So maybe we update the quantity permanently on the Building Committee if that's what you guys want to do.
Anyone else? All right, so the motion on the table is to cap the, go with the six that we have. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Allenson?
No.
I'm sorry, wait. The motion is for the six.
Oh, six that we have, yes.
Yes.
Carmody?
No.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
No.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Moreau?
No. Is that... Okay, motion passes. Okay, so that is all set. Seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.